I'll call the meeting in order, please. To stand for the pledge.
It is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor, please.
Sure. Chair Philip Lantry, absent. Vice Chair Russell Alexander?
Present.
Member Nanette Douglas?
Here.
Member Dawn Grigsby?
Present.
Member Ruby Bridgeforth?
Here.
Jacey Snyder?
Present.
Megan Marshall, absent.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. All members are voting members. Ms. Grigsby is a regular member. So we've updated the commission's seating. But Ms. Snyder will be a voting member this evening. If I could, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, members of the community here that are here this evening, we're gonna, the commission's gonna move through the agenda. I'm Jack Morgeson, by the way, the attorney for the planning commission. We're gonna move through the agenda. At the appropriate time, the chair will call for public comment on each case, and at the appropriate time, you can come and state your name and address and make your presentation to the commission within the time parameters that are allowed. The commission is an advisory commission to the city council. It's not here to answer questions this evening. They're here to take your feedback, your comments, your perspectives, and use that in terms of forming their recommendations on these cases. So I just want you to know that in advance. And with that, Mr. Chair, we can move forward.
I'd like to read the first, Resolution Number 2025-031R.
Okay, we can go for the.
There you go. Has everyone reviewed the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero, and it's approved.
Now I'd like to read in Resolution Number 2025-031R.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Schader, Senior Planner with Community Development. Tonight I'm presenting CNU 24-00003, located at 1443 Belladonna Place, for a commercial fence conditional use. So background, it is zoning highway business and with a future land use of commercial. In highway business zoning, any outdoor storage is a conditional use and is required to be screened in. So they are proposing to screen in their outdoor storage with a 50-foot by 14-foot opaque eight-foot tall fence with a 20-foot rolling gate. This is a depiction of the zoning highway business, and this is a depiction of the commercial future land use. So this is their provided concept plan. As you can see, this is the four units that City Electric occupies, and this is the proposed outdoor storage area. It does take up one parking space, but staff has evaluated the site plan and deems that that's not going to hinder the other businesses. And they did provide an updated concept plan, which you have been provided. If we could get that one up on the screen. So it's a little hard to see on the screen, but you do have it in front of you as well with, oh, I apologize, that is the wrong one. I got, I jumped the gun there a little bit, very excited. That's not the right one, I apologize. That's the different case, is the next case, I apologize. Thank you. Again, I apologize about that, that is the next one. But we're recommending approval of Resolution 2025-031R with the following conditions: No equipment or materials shall be displayed outside of the areas identified on the concept plan. Fencing shall be constructed of opaque materials and parts and supplies or materials. Fencing shall be constructed in a way that allows unobstructed access to the utility's access point. For clarification, TOHO has asked for this condition, as they do have a utility's access point in this location. And Planning Commission requested action is approval of Resolution 2025-031R with the conditions stated by staff. Staff and the applicant are available.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Hi, good evening.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
Sir, just state your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Micah Osteen, on behalf of City Electric Supply.
And I just wanna make sure, what was the height now? I know we kinda went back and forth between the two, so what's the height on this one?
I believe it was eight feet.
Thank you.
What's the material you're gonna use?
It's, it would be chain link enclosed with some, with an opaque material.
Any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have one for the applicant, but I do, just for my own edification, is the, whenever it's required that they have a fence by our code, et cetera, so they still have to submit how they're going to do it to the city for approval? Or is this only because they're doing something more unusual?
So because it is outdoor storage, it would be a conditional use. So the fence itself, when they construct it, will have to be a fence permit, but what we're actually reviewing is the use of outdoor storage, because that's what he plans to put behind the fence.
Got it, okay. So if it was like a dumpster, like dumpsters have to be behind something now? If that's just required, it doesn't require them to come before and get it approved, do they?
Correct. If that was something that was on their site development plan or their mini-site development plan, that would not be a conditional use.
Is there any public comment? You guys have anything on this issue?
Nope.
Make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of Resolution Number 2025-031R based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code.
With conditions.
There are, there were recommended conditions. Does the motion include the conditions that were contained in the, in the presentation?
Pardon?
Is that part of your motions, adopting the conditions that were also recommended?
Yes, and adopting the conditions that were recommended.
Motion on second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero, okay. Mr. Chairman, as I understand, staff wanted to update you on the, on the agenda for this evening, just some modifications.
Good afternoon, Dagmaris Segarra, Deputy Director for the Community Development. We just wanna make some announcements in regards to most, some of the items that are listed on the agenda tonight, but they will not be heard at this meeting tonight. That will be item C and D. The applicant has requested to pull these two items out of the agenda on certain day. They will be re-advertised, and the notifications will be sent to the public once we have a new hearing day. In addition, items F and G, the applicant has requested to also withdraw these two applications from the agenda to the next Planning Commission in April.
Thank you.
So that is just the Lake Lizzie Residential Development and McKay Street Matters.
Read the next item in, is CNU 24-00006, ABC Liquors.
Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners. Stephanie Schader, Senior Planner with Community Development. Tonight I'm presenting CNU 24-00006, located at 3555 13th Street, ABC Liquors, conditional use. So for background, it is located within the Highway Business Zoning District and has a future land use of commercial. Within the Highway Business zoning, a alcoholic beverage establishment is a conditional use and is required to be heard. They are proposing some facade and landscape enhancements, and no additional structural changes are proposed to the existing building. So this is the zoning depiction of highway business and the depiction of the future land use for commercial. Now, this is the concept plan that they are showing with the updated landscape improvements. And in front of you, which we will show again on the screen, they have agreed to one of the conditions that they have to add a hardscape here on these areas next to Neptune Road and 192. So they have included an aluminum fence, which if we can show this one this time. So this one is in front of you as well. Again, it's a little bit hard to see, but the applicant is working with staff. They are amenable to proposing the hardscape as we've added on as a condition, and that would have to be reviewed at a mini-site development plan along with the landscape. So here is the fencing here. Thank you. So staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2025-032R with the following conditions: No events may occur on the premise that allows or encourages the onsite consumption of alcohol due to the proximity of the school. Buffering to the southwest between the subject property and residential property shall remain in perpetuity. A mini-site development plan will be required prior to the issuance of a building permit demonstrating compliance with the Land Development Code Section 4.8.6(c), screening of vehicular areas. The landscape buffering between the parking spaces to the north along Neptune Road and East Earl Bronson Highway must include hardscape, trees, shrubs, and ground cover arranged to provide a visual screen transition between the parking area and the street. Hardscape elements could be a decorative metal fencing, decorative masonry knee wall no taller than 30 inches above grade, topped with decorative metal fencing, artistic sculpture, urban seating or furniture, or a combination of these elements. And the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan as a site plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. And Planning Commission requested action is approval of Resolution 2025-032R with the conditions stated by staff. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
I can't wrap my head around where that is.
It is the old CVS on Neptune next to Taco Bell Wonder. Okay, so to the north here is where Taco Bell was.
Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to come forward and identify? You state your name and address, please.
I'm John Kelly with KPM Franklin, 222 Church Street, Cassini, 34743. We are in agreement with the conditions. We do not sell alcohol on-site for consumption. We have presented the buffering plan. We, I have larger copies of that, if you would like to see that, because that was not very clear, I couldn't see it at least. And we are in agreement that we will go through the, the planning process, the continued planning process and the site development process. And should you have any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, there's not gonna be a circular dance floor that rotates.
No dance floor, no rotating. No, no bar, no nothing.
I have a question.
Sure.
Two questions. I'm assuming the school mentioned in the application is the church?
St. Thomas.
St. Thomas?
It said proximity, I would be, I would assume that, but I don't know, there, that is the closest in proximity being, you know, diagonally, I guess, northwest of the facility. It's a little over 600 feet away, if you were to go as the crow flies. And if you were to take a car and five o'clock traffic, it'd take about an hour and a half.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, go right ahead.
Stephanie Schader, Senior Planner. Yes, it is St. Thomas, a kind of school and church, so we consider both of those in proximity to the alcoholic beverage establishment.
Can you bring back the picture where the fencing is gonna be?
Would you like me to give you, I have.
No.
So.
No, just, you can point, I just missed it.
Yep, so to the north, to the north of the property here, along East Earl Lo, and then up on Neptune Road as well.
Okay, so that's.
Outside of the parking area, then? Correct. So, well, it's near the parking spaces that are here. Our code requires a hardscape if they face any right-of-way.
Because right now, there's nothing there, right?
Correct. And so since they're coming with a conditional use, we can add on that condition, so they're in compliance with today's code.
Okay, and that won't affect, you know, because I drive out a lot, and, you know, it's a, it's a cut-through. We turn there when the traffic is on 192 and you cut through there to.
Don't tell everybody.
Don't tell everybody.
It will not affect the cut-through, it is just in those areas for the parking spot.
Yeah, you can't go there anyway.
Yeah, half of it is closed, you're correct.
But there's also, there's another bar right behind it there, and so other, I think, alcoholic selling establishments, so we're not, it's not outside the realm of close to everything else, right?
So, I was, the current ordinance that we have for, for city is 750 feet, is that just for bars, or is that for any establishment to have liquor?
So our alcoholic beverage establishment, the guidelines, the 750 feet later in our code, it does not apply to anyone that is selling, and it's for the off-site consumption. So because they are selling and it is all for off-site consumption, it does not have to adhere to the 750-foot rule.
What is the, what is the rule for signage? Because I see these a lot with giant signs right there.
They will still have to meet our current Land Development Code standards for the signs for highway business. They can have one monument sign, and then we would evaluate however many wall signs they would have. There are certain percentages within highway business.
Anything else? Like to allow for public, public comment now, if I may?
I live in, my name's Joseph Alexander, 4153 Jefferson Drive. I can see it from my house, it's not very far at all. You stand in a park a lot of it, and you can look right at the church and the school across kitty corner of the intersection. I believe that there's not, there's not consumption there, but it's, it's gonna increase traffic, I believe. There's gonna be, one thing I do believe myself, that sometimes people going to a liquor store have already had a few, I believe that. Not everybody, of course, but some. And the fence they're putting up is for the road, it does nothing for us that can look at the back of this. And we also have an issue on 192 and Neptune there, a lot of loud motorcycles, cars, radio so loud that it shakes my house sometimes. I just believe that they, that people, I mean, I was young, I used to drink a lot once upon a time, and I believe that it's just gonna create a nuisance for people that lived there, and perhaps the school and the church as well. I mean, we have elderly people living in my neighborhood, and, and at the very least, I'd like to see them do something to shield it from my view, or our view. But that, that's my feelings about it, that it's, and then the drunken part is the bar on the other side, you can hear a lot of just loud stuff from there. Walmart has a, a national building that's just a liquor store, there's a liquor store there, and I believe there's one over by the Publix. So, that's just my feeling of it, so, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Sir, if you would, be sure before you leave to fill out a form for the clerks, we have you in the, in the file, the form if you, you did, okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Are there any other forms for this item?
No, on this case.
Okay, is there any other public comment? So I'd like to discuss this item. I think, there's a couple things that I had thought of with this, and one was the closest to the school and the visibility from the school, not even just how close it is, and the church there. Also, know that we already have several existing liquor stores, and a lot of those are locally smaller owned places and not chain brands. I was, I was concerned about signage, because I have seen ABC Liquors in other places, and they have larger signs that might not fit in with what we've got going on right now.
All good points.
Where's Jefferson Street, city, from, from the property?
I believe it's, I think you could see it on the other map better. There, there we go.
Well, all good points, that having, have lived right there for 44-plus years, I always firmly believe that when people own their property, they have the right to do what they want to it. So, even though it's, everybody feels like there might be enough of them around, that's their prerogative to do what they want with their property. And if the signage has to comply with what the city regulates, then we shouldn't have to worry too much about that.
I'm gonna make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution Number 2025-032R based on the conditions mentioned within the Land Development Code.
A second.
Just if I could clarify, the motion was to recommend approval, including the conditions that were included in the report?
Yes.
Based on, based on the Land Development Code factors for the conditions, I'm sorry, okay, thank you. And that was the second by Ms. Grigsby, yes? Okay, apologies, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We have a motion and a second? Can I call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Three to two, is that right? Passes, recommendation passes three to two, motion is passed.
Next item is ZMA 24-00014, Friars Cove Lane.
Good evening, Route Keep, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for a zoning map amendment for the project known as Friars Cove Lane. Currently, the property has existing zoning of agricultural, and they are proposing a zoning of R1 of these single-family dwelling. It's compatible within the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on the city facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use. As you can see, it is currently low-density residential. As well as, here's a zoning graphic of the agricultural zoning district. Honored before January 25th, staff recommended approval. Likewise, this requested the Planning Commission also recommends approval of ordinance number 2025-03 for the zoning map amendment known as Friars Cove Lane. Staff is available for questions.
Is the applicant present?
I do not believe so.
Commission have any questions for staff?
Not really, that area used to be lots of agriculture, but it's a bunch of homes and things now, so. I still think people get to do with their property what they want, as long as it follows the rules.
So have I read it right, it's just for a single-family, right, dwelling?
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I was getting ready for my next presentation. My name is Bruce Taylor, and I'm here representing the applicant, Jeremy Kibler. And if you have any questions, I can hopefully answer them.
What's he gonna build?
At this point, he's gonna do two single-family houses, do a lot split, it'll probably be about a half an acre, so two nice lots.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll close the public comment session. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Can I have a motion?
I would like to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-3 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. A second.
Have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next. Next item is two, two to be read in together? Correct. CPA 2400011 and ZMA 2400010, Taveras Santiago?
Good evening, Route Keep, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for the project known as Taveras Santiago. Currently, they have existing county future land use of low-density residential, and they have existing zoning of RS2. They are proposing a future land use of low-density residential in the city, and they are proposing a zoning of R1 single-family residential. It is compatible with this surrounding area, and it will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use. As you can see, it currently has a low-density residential future land use in the county, as well as a zoning of RS2. Honored before January 25th, staff recommended approval. Likewise, is recommended that Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-09 and ordinance number 2025-11. Staff is available for questions.
The applicant present?
No, the applicant is not present, I think.
Any questions for staff?
Just a reminder, can, why from county to city, what is their purpose? Is it the, the amount that they can fit on the land, the number of units, or?
Yes, and they are contiguous. Earlier, we did approve an annexation, meaning we have to also approve the comprehensive zoning map.
We've already approved the annexation, so, okay, so technicality sort of, gotcha. Yeah, necessity. Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Do we have any public comment on this? I'd like to close the public comment. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Just a reminder, for the commission, take each of these two ordinances one at a time for the record, thank you.
Do we have a motion on CPA 2400011? Ordinance number 2025-11?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-11 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And along with that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item is ordinance number two zero two five one four with ordinance number two zero two five one five, East Side Park.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bernice Gonzalez, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. The cases before you tonight are for the comprehensive plan amendment and assuming map amendment and preliminary master plan for the project known as East Side Park, PUD. Sorry. For background, uh, this property was annexed previously, and the applicant has, according to her code, up to a year to select a zoning designation as well as a future land use within the city. At this time, the applicant is requesting a future land use of low density residential. Oh, they have an existing county. Future land use of low density residential is then corrected, and a county zoning of AC which is agricultural. The applicant is proposing a request for medium density residential and a proposed zoning request for a planned unit development. To support the development of ninety-four duplex style, single family units. Development is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, and it has been reviewed for no adverse impact to city facilities. Uh, this is a representation of the current future land use. The diagonal lines indicate that this property is within the city, but still doesn't have a city future land use, which is what we're requesting tonight. And this is the representation of the zoning map. Likewise, they're showing the county's zoning district and the diagonal lines indicating the request of a zoning map amendment to plan unit development. To the east side, the purple color, is an existing planned unit development with a similar density to the development requested. The request aligned with the strategic plan goal of the city of a high performing, performing government for the sustainability and continuity of core public services. The development is within existing public services, and they are available, and we will be extended to the site. As well as they will provide an additional right of way for the widening of East Ten Street compatible with the right of way provided by the adjacent properties that have been developed, as well as an enhanced landscape buffer facing Ten Street, where the units along the Ten Street side will face Ten Street, it will not be the rear side. They will face that enhanced buffer, there will be a fence provided, and there will be sidewalks provided as well as part of the development. Staff reviewed the recommendation honored before February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and recommended approval. Likewise, tonight, we request, uh, an action from the planning commission to recommend approval of the future land use amendment, zoning map amendment, and preliminary master plan. Staff and the applicant are available for any further questions. Thank you.
Can I just ask, test my understanding, when you were saying that, um, I think you showed like a map, a purple one on it, and said the adjacent property was similar, was it, is also medium dens- thank you, yes, that one, is that also medium density?
Yes, they're lovely duplexes.
They're duplexes, and they are medium density.
Okay.
If we look at the future land use, it has a medium density future land use.
Gotcha, thank you.
It's actually Oak Tree Point, a lovely little duplex community.
Would the applicant like to come forward and identify himself for the record?
Good evening, Bruce Taylor again, one thirty-one East Thirteenth Street. I'm actually the engineer, the applicant, client is behind me, any other questions? But, yeah, a little more, um, Oak Tree Point, that actually, I think it has about ninety-eight units, and we're at ninety-four proposed units with a density of around six and a half per acre. So, um, I think our density that we're going for goes up to ten, so we're sixty-five percent of that. Um, we're proposing, I believe the, um, the, uh, applicant actually gave you a packet if you want to go through. So, um, the site plan is actually on there, very nice plan that, um, that was described before, where these are all rear loading lots. So, everything has a driveway access, accessed by a, a rear alleyway. And, um, we have about thirty per, little more than thirty percent open space, which is about ten percent more of what's required for, um, this type of development, we're around twenty percent. And, um, we have also amenities, a whole bunch of amenities in the back. We have a, a walkway along the natural berm, uh, adjacent to the lake with a pickleball court, and also a large, um, dog walking park as in the rear, and also a large, um, wet detention pond with more amenities around, around the top. And then also for the, the building type, we have three separate, um, architectural styles that are on I think it's like the fifth page.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so we have those, those three different types, two stories. And then also we have an enhanced landscape plan that shows far and, far and above the, um, requirements for the city with, with hardscape also shown. So, if you have any other questions, I'm here.
They're all two stories and how many bedroom bathrooms?
I believe they're three bedroom, two baths, two stories, yes.
And they're gonna be, they're gonna be owned units or rental units?
Um, I think they're gonna be home, yes. And we did, and also we did have, um, a charrette with the adjacent property owners that came out, uh, I believe it was October in person, and then we had another one that was online that no one was, was available for. So, we, we discussed the layout with some of the property owners adjacent to us.
When is conclusion estimated?
Well, um, we have to go through the, um, God willing, we get approved, we have to go through the, uh, master site, or master, um, PUD plan. Uh, I would say probably in about eighteen months, we can start construction.
And this looks like, this looks like it just has a one end way, one way in and one way out, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and actually, um, we did speak with the fire marshal before we came out. We were gonna be making some changes for better traffics, or actually, better traffic and also for better, uh, fire access. Two of the, uh, hammerheads are gonna be, uh, connected, so we can get more traffic, uh, internal circulation. But we're gonna go ahead and make that, but the next change would be for the master site plan, or master, uh, PUD plan. I have the, uh, the applicant and the client developer, if you need any other questions over and above than what I've given you.
Any other questions at this time?
Not, not for the applicant, but just could staff elaborate a little bit more on the sidewalk? And what's happening when, anything additional for Ten Street as it's getting busier and busier?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bernice Gonzalez, Principal Planner, Community Development. As a recommendation of Public Works, the widening for the road shall match the widening the line with the PUD adjacent to the east, which shall provide the required road width for widening and improvements when the time comes to, to perform those.
So the sidewalk's only gonna be in front of this particular development for now, because it probably ends by Overcup for there.
It will be in front of the development, uh, at Ten Street, and will connect with any sidewalks available to the east since the parcel to the west is vacant, and mostly wetland.
Right. The sidewalk goes all the way down to Narcousie Road, so that addition is a nice addition, okay?
Like to open it up for public comment? Please state your name and address.
Tammy Simonson, I live at eighteen forty-four Overcup Avenue. And, um, back in October, we did meet with this developer. Um, my property backs up to the retention pond that is a DOT retention pond, and I paid a premium for my view of the trees and everything back there. Um, so now I will be looking at two story townhomes. When we met with them, we did request that they consider single story homes so that we wouldn't have to look at homes behind us that we paid a premium to not have to do. Um, additionally, as you're considering this, the detention, the retention pond that is, um, owned by the DOT does not have a sidewalk in front of it. So, um, our neighborhood over, um, Ash, Oak Tree Point does have a sidewalk that goes over the creek. There is no sidewalk in front of the retention pond, therefore, the sidewalk would pick up in front of this neighborhood across from Hickory Tree. Um, when we met with them back in October, that was a request that I made as well to have, uh, that sidewalk connect in front of the DOT retention pond. I'm trying to think if there is anything else. I mean, this, this is gonna happen, the traffic's gonna get worse on Ten Street, it's, it's tiny street. And I just wanted to definitely make sure that my voice was heard.
Thank you.
So can we address what her request was to the applicant? Was that anything that they can do, I mean, they're probably not going to not do two story units, but are there any?
Sir, please say your name and address.
Shama Faridi, Luxury Development, forty-seven hundred, um, Nellie Boulevard, Orlando. Yes, uh, we did meet, and, um, there, there were some discussions about landscape buffers, and I did, we did speak about the sidewalk. We don't technically own the right of way in front of the DOT pond, but we did agree if we can have that, we can put the sidewalk. We don't have an issue connecting the sidewalks from their subdivision to ours. So, um, well, we don't have any, I wanna make sure that it's right of way is there in front of the pond, and I'm not sure if it's there.
But if I'm not mistaken, there is really a pond like, or as we're talking, there is, isn't there something in between the Overcup houses and your development?
Yeah, it's the DOT pond.
Yeah.
Which we don't own.
Right, 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 but so they're not gonna be smack up against each other, right, there's gonna be some sort of buffer there.
Right, so that's as far as the sidewalk. So the sidewalk from their, uh, subdivision stops just about where the DOT pond is. Okay, so there's a gap between their sidewalk and sidewalk that we're planning to build. So we, we agreed to connect that in front of the DOT pond, like, I think.
But we have to get DOT permission, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we can get that permission, we're okay with, you know, connecting the sidewalks. And as far as the buffers, we enhanced our landscaping buffer, buffers, we're planting, um, almost like twelve, ten foot trees, and I think in your, um, uh, handout, you'll see some of the buffers that we're proposing.
How do we know if DOT will let us do that, or let you do that, or we don't know, we're just gonna ask?
Dagmar Isagara, Deputy Director, Community Development, that's correct. Um, as you can see in the aerial, the pond is FDOT. If the right of way is not available, um, they will not have the space to put the sidewalk. The code requires the sidewalk to the length of their, their project. That property is not owned by the applicant, they will have to reach out to FDOT for, um, permission. Um, and it's really at the discretion, that's why the subdivision that was built on the other side, their sidewalks stop at the pond. Um, unfortunately, that's something that, as we grow as a city, um, the city makes capital improvement programs to fill out those gaps. Because it's, you know, sometimes that's, it's easier when the city's dealing with FDOT than a developer. We can certainly make that request, uh, if a PUD, as a PUD, the city has the ability to, um, request more than what the code requires. Um, we can certainly make a recu- the board can make a recommendation to add that condition to the PUD, um, and they can make the adjustments at the final master plan. And we can bring that recommendation to City Council.
Great.
I have a question for city. Is East Ten Street right there, is that maintained by the city right now?
That portion, yes.
Okay, so we're still looking to improve that, right?
Yeah, um, as you know, there's been a couple of years that the, uh, Public Works has been working on a, um, P and D uh, for the improvements of Ten Street, but as you know, this is a collaboration with the county as well. Um, so that's why things get a little delay when it's multi-governmental, um, effort.
I just hope that the city, even, sometimes the city rules, like, you know, my fence is here, but you don't own that, so you can't attach to the DOT fence. Sometimes things like that happen that stops it, so I'd hope that, like you said, the city can work and sometimes have to have a gray area for that to happen, because it would be really a shame for all of, all of the residents that would be on that area not to be able to walk from Narcousie Road, at least that far, especially these new residents, so. Thanks.
Is there any more public comment? On this item? And then just to be clear, for the, for the owner, for the applicant, um, the trees are existing now, they have to go away for the open space and detention pond, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright.
Most of the ones around, uh, where the trees are, are on the lake, we're saving those, so.
Excuse me, would you repeat that?
Yeah, the trees that are on the open space where the, uh, lake is, we're saving those.
Okay. To help with the buffer, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yeah, but there's a little, lot of stuff being moved already there, being cleared, so.
Yeah.
There's no more public comment, I'd like to close the public comment session. Like to see if there's any discussion from the committee, commission?
Not really, except that I'd really love for us as a unified force to recommend to the council to engage with the DOT somehow, I'm not sure how to say that, I'm sure council will guide us through that, but.
Yeah, it would be nice to have the sidewalk connected.
Exactly.
Especially, and that's the, the biggest problem right here, and it's just Ten Street is narrow, I drive it all the time, and it's super narrow. And it's not really pedestrian friendly at all.
Yep. Go down there probably fifteen times a day.
But then, um, when we look at, at what's proposed versus what could be, this seems lighter than some alternatives. So, there's no more discussion? So if there's no more discussion, I'd like to call for a motion on both items. Or one item, sorry, one at a time.
Okay, let's see. I'd like to make a motion, sorry, it's on two pages. Yeah, I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number 2025-14 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code. And, and I know you were mentioning about, let's try and bring attention to the fact that we'd like to see the sidewalk there. I don't know where we.
I think that can be addressed in the following.
Okay, thank you.
So my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed?
No.
Pass is five zero, all right.
I'd like to call for a motion. If anyone would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-15 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code with the additional condition of working with the DOT to extend the sidewalk. Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is, we have three. 2025-18, ordinance number 2025-19, and ordinance number 2025-20, Wild Willy Airboat.
Good evening, Ralph Heath, Associate Planner for, for the Community Development Department. The case before you tonight is for an annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as Wild Willy Airboats. Currently, the property is contiguous and reasonably compact. It abuts the city limits to the east, west, and south. It has existing county future land use of mixed use and existing county zoning of mixed use. The applicant is requesting a proposed future land use of mixed use as well as a proposed zoning of mixed use. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and will have no adverse impacts on the city facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the future, of the, sorry, of the location. Here you can see where it abuts the city limits in the county as well as a representation of the future land use map. And lastly, this is the zoning map. On or before October 25th, 2024, staff recommended approval. Staff has also received a public feedback, which you have been provided with some letters from the public in opposition of the project. Likewise, it is requested that the Plan Commission also recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-18, ordinance number 2025-19, and ordinance number 25, 2025-20 for the project known as Wild Willy Airboats. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Would the applicant like to come forward and identify?
Good evening, John Adams, RJWA, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741. We're the agent for the application. We're in agreement with staff's recommendation to approve these three applications, an annexation, land use, and a zoning application. Just want to point out a couple of things tonight. We currently in the county have mixed-use land use and currently have mixed-use zoning. We're simply asking for the same land use and same zoning within the city of St. Cloud. We are adjacent to the city, and we're subject to your JPA. That's why we're here tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
So why does Wild, why does Wild Willy want to come to the city?
So, adjacent to the city, he actually purchased the property in 2021. This, he's currently down at the end of Kissimmee Park Road with his business. He's been in business for 18 years within that trailer park community down at the end. I believe it's Lake Toho RV Resort down there. This piece of property is just to the west of Lake Toho Road, just to the west of Clay Whaley's Landing, which is a public boat ramp that's open 24/7. The county's actually purchased an additional acre to the west of that boat ramp to expand on that boat ramp. So this property does make sense to have additional airboat uses. You can tell by the application that it is an airboat use down next to a public boat ramp as opposed to in an existing residential community where it's currently at. But again, that's not on the agenda tonight. It's the annexation, the land use, and the zoning. I do just want to be transparent, and the name does give it away that it would be an airboat.
And that's the, that's the intended?
Yes, yes. There's a fourth application that has been filed for, it's part of your mixed-use district. It's required. It's called a mixed-use concept plan. That actually goes to City Council for final adoption, does not come to this council for recommendation. So this, after tonight, the fourth application would be heard in front of City Council on April 10th.
Did you say that was residential? Because I'm looking at this aerial, and all I see is green.
There's one residential unit to the west of us, our proposed dock area. That residential unit would be a little over a quarter mile away. That proposed dock still has to go through all of its entitlements through an SDP process, through City Council, or, excuse me, through city staff. And then they also have to go through the proper permitting for South Florida Water Management and to get that dock. So we're still very early on in the process. Step one of the process is getting the land use and the zoning.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just would like to reserve some time to answer any of the public's questions if there's any public comments tonight.
Yes. We do have a, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Can you please state your, your name and address for the record?
I'm Janine Wooton. I'm at 3662 Lake Toho Pocalla Road in St. Cloud. So two lots over from the proposed annexation.
We'd like to hear your comments on.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to comment. I wanted to start with, first of all, just to put on record, though this is nothing personal against Wild Willy Airboats or John Williams. He's been a fine neighbor. I want that on record. We just are here to protect our rights to peaceful enjoyment of our land. You said you saw one residential, or he, the gentleman that just spoke, one residential unit to the west. There are actually four, and all four families are represented here tonight. We already hear an awful lot of noise from the airboats. I can't imagine how it would be if they were at Whaley's Landing. I'm curious, I just want to bring up, I'm curious if anyone in the room can say that they were born and raised in St. Cloud, or that they are descendants, all right, that they're descendants, or that they're descendants of one of the original pioneer families, or that they have five. Good for you. So we have five generations over 100 years on that land. If you, the map that you had up, the four lots to the, to the west of that. So that's backdrop, that's where we're coming from. I'm speaking to you as a Whaley. We just feel that we would like to see our land respected. My mom's 92, she was born on the land, she's still living on that land right now, and my aunt, who's 90 also. So I echo all the other family members that'll be speaking tonight. I'm running out of time. I also want to speak to you as a Realtor. I'm sure you're familiar on the community development, highest and best use. We've got Bellatera coming, we've got Metro Development Group coming, both intending huge, nice communities along Lake Toho Pocalla Road. I can't imagine that they would consider an airboat business at the end of the road there a good fit or highest and best use. I've also looked at the envisioned St. Cloud, long-term future plans that you guys have for St. Cloud. And again, I don't think that another airboat business or an airboat business moving to that location would be highest and best use or a good fit for what you see in the future. I think the, the growth in St. Cloud has been fast and furious, and I just am asking that we pump the brakes and really think long-term about St. Cloud at its very best, what it can be at its best. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an Aaron. We have, we have some cards, and then we'll get everyone. Yes, please. We have an Aaron Smith.
Hello, Council, my name is Aaron Smith. I live at 3650 Lake Toho Pocalla Road. I am right next door to where they're proposing this new plan. And I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to this annexation on the grounds of peace and quiet. We have two widows that are part of my family that are very elderly, and I want them to live in peace for the rest of their lives. Our family member, Clay Junk Whaley, donated a water treatment plant to the county to provide clean drinking water to all citizens of the neighborhood. Whaley's Landing has been the Whaley's, in the Whaley family for many years until it was sold for public use. Citizens doctor all the time, use their boats for their needs, go fishing. It's very peaceful for the most part. Everybody just has a great time. But Whaley's Landing was purchased for government use. We would just appreciate if you would take our kindness and generosity into account when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an Anne Bondi.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Anne Bondi. I live at 2560 Yellow Brick Road in St. Cloud. Good evening, and thank you for listening to our voice tonight for concerns on this proposal of annexation and subsequent building of the airboat business. This would be adjacent to our family land, and I am here representing my 92-year-old mother as her power of attorney. She has submitted a letter because it is gunsmoke time, and she needs to be at home watching her gunsmoke. All right. "To whom it may concern, my name is Nancy Bradford, and I live at 3660 Lake Toho Pocalla Road in St. Cloud, Florida. I am 92 years old, and I cannot attend the meeting, but I wanted to let you know my opinion about the letter that I received about the voluntary annexation. I was actually born on the land in 1932, and I have a few thoughts to share. The noise from the airboats is already very annoying because when they ride too close to the shore, and I'm very worried about having an airboat business moving on Whaley's Landing and how much worse it will be. This property has been in the family for over 100 years and has always been very peaceful until recently. It's not like, I'm going to add here, it's not like we purchased a lot next to an airport, and, you know, we know where we're getting. We have been peaceful for 100 years, and now we're dealing with all of this noise. And we are afraid that a business like this will bring more noise and more traffic. And I have always felt safe here, but thinking about so many people coming that we don't know, coming and going makes me nervous. I can't see how all of this will add value to our property, and thank you very much for considering my concerns." So we're going to hear from the other four families here. Representation, 100% of us are opposed to this annexation and subsequent building of Wild Willys with the airboats. And again, nothing against John Williams or the right to own your business and build, you know. It's just the peace and quiet has been disrupted already without even having them out of that, out of Whaley's Landing. We are comprised of 63, 62.63 acres to the left of, on the map. So it's not a small amount that this family represents. And I just, I wanted y'all to hear, I wish you'd come hear how loud it is with the airboats coming and going. I just, yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a Ina Road.
I don't have notes for anyone, but I do have something on my phone that I just wanted to read, if I can get, pull it up here again.
Just please state your name and your address, please.
Ina Roadie, 3600 Lake Toho Pocalla Road. But there's a notice down at the boat landing that says, "Ossioa County has established an idle-speed, no-wake boat and vessel speed zone in the waterways next to any land used as public boat ramp or for a residential or commercial purpose. The speed zone exceeds from, extends from the shore onto the water a distance of 300 feet as posted violation of idle-speed, no-wake speed zone within the unincorporated areas of the county may result in a fine of up to $500." They go right on the edge of the shore, and it is very loud. We're set back off the road or off the lake, but the road is too small for boats and cars almost. My husband has an F-150, and they have, just with the boat pulling, someone pulling a boat, it has knocked his side mirror off, and I can't imagine with taking airboats down there. And I have nothing against airboat business, whoever wants it, but I've lived there all my life just about, and I have actually seen somebody with an airboat pull up on the ridge and shoot at a turkey toward my backyard, with me in the backyard and my three-year-old granddaughter. So I don't like the up and down all the time of the airboats, and especially when they come right on the shoreline. If they're 300 feet out, that's better. If they're quieter, they do donuts. They're just noisy, and it has disrupted our lives. But the biggest concern is that road is narrow, and with them building all that on the east side of Lake Toho Pocalla Road, and probably will be entrances and exits for people to come in and off of that road. Unless they make it wider, it's not feasible. But, you know, I know people want to make a living doing what they can, but we've lived with it for years. And it's, if they abide by what I just read, would be one thing, but they don't. They do donuts. They're right on the shore, and as loud as they are, it's very noisy. Thank you.
Thank you. Like a, we've got a Brandon Sizemore.
I didn't have any plans of speaking tonight, but here I am. I live at 1701 Connecticut Avenue here in St. Cloud. I've also been a boat captain at Bodleus for 10 years now. Like I said, this is a, an existing business. We've been operating for 17 years where we're at, located further down Kissimmee Park Road. Where we run, just to be transparent with you guys, we already visit during our tours the frontage of their property to Lake Toho. So they've already experienced the sounds of the boats and whatnot. Where we plan or hope to build one day with your approval, not necessarily would that change that, but with the respect of everyone's concerns and what we've done with park residents or where we operate already, is respectfully, like I said, no written agreement even, just a handshake, respectfully as neighbors. a handshake, respectfully as neighbors, do what you can to keep it down. Saying three hundred yards away, that's totally plausible. If we're granted the dock space, that's going to come out into Toho. For us to have an idle zone, totally plausible. There should be no difference in the noise of what they're concerned about. I'm also a little taken back by some of our pioneer families talking about this new development. When you're talking about a company that wants to do nothing but preserve our heritage here in Osceola County, talk about our wildlife. We hate seeing what the Platts have done and getting rid of all this land that's going to be this lagoon property, everything that we're buttoned up to. What's the issue with preserving airboats, which has been a Florida staple since the nineteen twenties? The best way to tour the Everglades and to experience our wildlife for our guests and our visitors that come from all around the world. That's it.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Ryan Ferrari.
Good evening, guys. How are you all doing? Kind of touching up what Brandon just stated. I mean, I've got family.
So just state your name and your address.
Ryan Ferrari, three one-two-three Dark Sky Drive, Harmony, Florida. I've got multi-generational family members, grew up here in Osceola County. My great-grandfather was one of the first ones here in Kissimmee. So not disgracing you guys, you know, I know the way at least I, I grew up with Little Keith and all them since babies. Shoot, had some of the best hunting experience I've ever had out on y'all's property growing up. Still to this day, there's a lot of people that run airboats that are not even on tours that you're in the best airboating of the whole entire country. You've got people coming in from literally all over the U.S. that bring their airboats down here to Osceola County to run these airboats. And yeah, our airboats, you know, they're a little noisy. All airboats are. I mean, it's, it's, it's part of, part of the experience. You know, we've got a lot of people that run up that shoreline non-stop. There's constantly head-on, you know, people that run through there every day. So, I mean, just, just because, you know, we were wanting to move locations, we already run through there. It's not, it's not going to be anything new. We, this is not a, not a new place that we're just visiting now or going to be visiting. It is something that we run through there every single tour just by moving locations to have a, you know, better experience for the customers in, in this community, especially with all the development around there. It's, uh, it'd be, it'd be amazing to have a blessing to have our own little space to where we don't have to deal with the customers at Lake Toho Resort. They can have their space and we can have ours. It's not going to change any difference. It's still a part of our A.O. that we run that we've been granted for years. No different. We're not the only airboat company out there that runs tours through there. You got Boggy Creek, you got another airboat company, Crazy Gator. They all run right through there, not to mention a couple of the airboat companies that are on private tours. And then during hunting season for the, for the alligator hunting season, they all, there's forty, fifty boats that I know of, people from all over the place come down here. This is, this, this is the airboat capital of the country. So it's not going to change anything, unfortunately. I understand you guys want to preserve, you know, y'all's family's property. This is just a, a part of the growing pains that we've all endured here in, in Osceola County. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
We have a Brian. I'll let you say it, McMurtry.
How are you doing, guys? Good evening. My name is Brian McMurtry. My address is three-one-six Eagle Crest Drive. I just want to come up here. I am one of the captains for Wild Willys. I've been working here for over eight years. This family has adopted me, basically. I am not from St. Cloud, but this company is. It started in St. Cloud. I wanted to stay in St. Cloud. I know there's, you know, four families are against this, but there is more than twenty families right here today that live off this company right now. There are families that depend on this company. I have two daughters myself. I'm not sure what would I be without this company. So I understand that they have concerns about the noise. I just want to say that we operate after nine AM. We are a company that our last boat, ninety percent of the time of the year goes out at three-thirty. So we start at nine AM and our last boat goes out at three-thirty, ninety percent of the times of the year. We're not out there late at night. We don't hunt, we don't promote hunting. We want to save the animals. So those persons that you guys see out there hunting has nothing to do with us. We are pro animals. We are one of the best companies out there. We promote nothing but safety. You can check our reviews. You guys can see our track history. We never had an accident. Those three-sixties, that is other companies. That does not represent Wild Willys. We are one of the safest companies in Florida. I can speak for myself. I am in charge of the Coast Guard regulations. We work hand-by-hand with the Coast Guard to make sure that we are in the terms of where can we go, how fast can we go, the hours that we operate. We are one of the safest, if not the safest, company that operates. Everybody is highly trained, everybody is highly certified. We are very professionals. I would like the opportunity to work with them. I know this is a new thing, but in life, it's about expanding the future creating. We can't stay stuck in the past, unfortunately. We would all like the things to be like it is before, but that's not how it is. We have to move forward in the future. And I think Wild Willys is one of the company that it is family. It's not just this Walmart big corporate. This is a family industry that's going to come in and you guys are going to see that basically it's going to be lots of love and respect. It's not going to be animosity, it's not going to be corporate. It's going to be, like I said, it's, it's going to be home, it's going to be a family. So I just wish they knew that, that on our side, we just want nothing but keep on progressing and something nice for the, for the city, you know, come out, ride with us, enjoy beautiful Florida what we have to offer. That's all we want, just, like I say, the boats already operate through that area. It's not going to be an additional noise. We already operate there, like I said, from nine to three-thirty most of the time. So it's not going to be that we're going to be out there at ten PM, eight PM, at nine in the morning. We don't, you know, oh, sorry. Thank you. And just, you know, know that this is basically family for us.
Thank you.
Jeff McKinney. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jeff McKinney. I live at twenty-seven eighty-five Abshire Road.
We'd like to hear what you have to say.
I'm just here to ask that you deny the proposal for the Willys there coming down Lake Toho. I know this business already operates on the lake. We've endured relentless noise of these airboats seven days a week. I know they say the last boat goes out at three-thirty. I don't know what time it comes back, but I hear them late, later than three-thirty, that's for sure. Moving this closer to our homes will only make things worse, more noise, lower our property values, increase traffic and greater environmental harm. This area is kind of, I know it's turning residential, but for us, it's still agricultural right there. Improving this move would put the interest of one business owner over the well-being of all the people who presently live there. We didn't choose to live next to the airboat, airboat launch. We chose peace, nature and a home. And I ask that you please don't take that away from our family.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? There was two letters submitted from Kelly McKinney, Clara McKinney with Kelly McKinney. Kelly McKinney says, "My mother and I are not happy about the airboats starting an airboating business so close to our house and our family's houses. The airboats are so loud, we can hear them in our houses as it is already. We also don't want a tremendous increase in houses and traffic jams out our way. I'm sure other people in our area do not like this either. Please have some consideration for the people who have been living here for quite a few years. Sincerely, Kelly McKinney." Clara McKinney and Kelly McKinney say, "We are not too happy about the airboats starting a new business at Lake Tohopakaliga Landing. They make so much noise and they come close to the shore. It will increase the traffic on our road a great deal. We only have one way to get out of this area. All the homes they plan to build is going to cause a lot of confusion. I would be at the meeting, but I'm ninety years old. Please take consideration of this." Clara McKinney. There was one more letter that was read by a previous member of the public. Is there any more public comment? I'd like to close public comment. Let's say applicant like through this phone.
Yes, again, for the record, John Adams, R.J. Widdon, agent for the applicant. There's several things I wanted to address tonight. First one is, yes, I did refer to one home to the west. There are four homes out there. I was simply referring to the closest one that that house would be over a quarter mile from the proposed dock. And then I wanted to get into several other of the concerns from the neighbors. First one is, again, this is an existing business. It's been in business for eighteen years. It's regularly in compliance with the U.S. Coast Guard, demonstrating a strong record of, you know, safe and responsible operations. As the boat captains did point out tonight, they are actually going through there now. They do have a handshake agreement that was pointed out to the existing neighbors that they're around now that they idle in and out. That's what would happen at this location. There may likely be less noise because instead of going through there at a high speed with more noise, they're going to be idling to and from that dock. As the ordinance was pointed out by one of the neighbors, that you have three-hundred-yard idle. They're responsible for doing that at this commercial location. So are private citizens. There's no way for Wild Willys to be responsible for private citizens. As one of the boat captains pointed out, they operate their last tour ninety percent of the time at three-thirty in the afternoon. They can't prevent private citizens that already use Whaley's Landing and already create noise from a public facility that's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that they're adjacent to. Osceola County has also purchased one acre of land on the southeast corner, right adjacent to it, to expand this facility and have additional uses as the community grows around this with the future development. One of the things that was pointed out a couple of different times was traffic on Lake Toho Road. All development, all new development is responsible for road improvements. Whether Wild Willys comes in first or Belatera that's already pushing their phase-one dirt, they're responsible for making road improvements to Lake Toho Route. It's actually a framework road and the ultimate design of that will have a median down the middle with single lane going each way, sidewalks on both sides and likely parallel parking as well. Going through my notes here. And just back to the noise again, there, St. Cloud does have a noise ordinance that they're responsible to comply with. That runs from seven AM to ten PM at night. As one of the captains stated, they run from nine to three-thirty. So they're during the day with their tours. And then just the last thing I want to reinforce tonight is that this proposed zoning and land use and annexation is in compliance with the St. Cloud's comprehensive plan, their land development vision and in accordance with your JPA. Everything to the west of it was brought up as ag land. It's currently mixed-use land use and mixed-use zoning within the county as well. So this area has been planned for growth since two thousand and four when the land, Urban Land Institute came in and assessed this area and converted a lot of this back in two thousand and eight to mixed-use land use and mixed-use zoning within the county. That's what this property already has, a mixed-use land use and mixed-use zoning. And that's all we're asking for tonight is the same land use and the same zoning in the city as well. That final mixed-use concept plan application that's proposing a neighborhood center, that that neighborhood center allows an airboat use and many other uses within a neighborhood center will be heard at a later hearing and not at this hearing tonight. We haven't answered any of you guys' questions.
I have a question. Is there any infrastructure going to be built on this?
New developments require infrastructure. So one of them, as I pointed out, is Lake Toho. It's required by your land development code. If Wild Willys comes in first, they'd be responsible for improving Lake Toho all the way up to the next urban cross-section, which would likely be Kissimmee Park Road. Is that feasible for a small airboat company? No. So that's likely going to be relying on the other development that's already broke ground out there that's already responsible for making improvements to that road that they're adjacent to. And as far as water, sewer and other public utilities, any new development per your land development code is responsible for that as well.
So you're saying it's not going to be an inexpensive endeavor for them to develop this into what they want?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
For Wild Willys, whatever they're going to do with this property, there is a significant amount of work that's going to have to go into it.
Yeah, this is step one in the process. They still, if this were to get approved at city council on April tenth, they still have to go through engineering plans with a full staff review of those engineering plans for code compliance. They still have to go through their South Florida Water Management permitting for the water management facilities and then also have to go through all their dock permitting through the state as well.
And he purchased this property in two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes, he's owned land with the intent to move his business here for a long time. He previously went to the county and unfortunately got some bad advice at the time and spent some money and Belatera got annexed and that's why we're here tonight.
So the eight and a half acres was for sale. Anybody could have bought it.
Yes, it is private property.
It's a private property that could have been purchased for green area, for recreation, for anything. He just decided to buy it.
Yes, and it has had a mixed-use land use and a mixed-use zoning since, I believe, two thousand and ten in the county. So anybody could have purchased it for what they wanted. It could stay as an existing use, but any new development such as we're proposing would be in compliance, had to be in compliance with the code.
And let's say he didn't own an airboat. He would still want to annex and develop or whatever. All of that we're talking about tonight is bringing him into the city. Regardless of whether he ever does open up and have an airboat there, he still has to be coming into the city, basically.
Yes, per your, per your JPA, he's required to because he's adjacent to the city.
And that's really what we're here to talk about tonight, not necessarily an airboat.
Correct.
Okay. And I guess, wait, I know I have one other here. We had established, oh, the no, well, you wouldn't know this, never mind.
You can ask it, I'm fine.
Well, it's just about, I mean, the noise and the things that the residents are really concerned about. I mean, the point is really well-taken that it's probably not them. And is there a Coast Guard for our lakes where people can be monitoring like who might be shooting guns or going too close or too fast? Is there anything you know about?
So again, there, with them being a private business, they have yearly inspections with the Coast Guard that they have to go through. I can imagine that if Wild Willys is breaking one of these, somebody's going to see it on the side of one of their boats and know and report them. They can't do anything about private citizens going out, you know, other hours, shooting shotguns on the shore, not abiding by the three-hundred-yard ordinance from a shoreline. That would be up to, you know, Osceola County to enforce. And it's next to a public boat ramp. When I placed the advertisement out there two Sundays ago, there was probably eight to ten airboat trailers at Whaley's Landing. So it's already an existing use in the area.
And is there any particular reason why he's moving from Toho Resort? Just running out of room or?
Well, to be honest, he's significantly closer to a lot more neighbors down there. They've had a friendly relationship over the year, but this does give them more land. It'll help with future expansion should they, you know, choose to grow their business with other, you know, ecotourism. You know, what that looks like would, you know, come at a later stage. It would still maintain the airboat business.
He just operates out of there. He doesn't actually own that land, does he? Where the, the Toho Resort is the Toho Resort. He operates out, out of that, those docks, right?
Yes, yes. There's docks right there, right next to the homes now, again.
Yeah, I've been down there many, 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 many times. So I know that, that's why I was just saying. So now he wants to go and be on his property that he purchased.
His private property with the intent, and of the eight acres of this- His private property with the intent, and of the eight acres of this property, only about four of it's actually being requested for a neighborhood center. There's a Lake Toho Protection Zone. It's a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from the high water line and an average of five hundred. So there's a wetland on shore that he's not proposing any impacts with that application. There is some water management and there would be some secondary impacts for a dock to get down to his actual proposed docks down in the water.
Just for clarification, one of your captains said that the last boat goes out at three thirty. What time does he come back?
I can go by the hours that I was given to by the owner. So they operate typically in the winter from nine AM to seven fifteen at the latest. And then in the summers from nine AM to about eight fifteen at night. The airboat tours are right around an hour. I know they do have some offset times at times when they have National Geographic out there. They'll go out, you know, earlier, but that's more idle speed for photographers to take pictures. But if they, ninety percent of the time, three thirty, it's an hour tour, so roughly four thirty-five.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Thank you. On again, we're in agreement with staff's recommendation to approve just the annexation, the land use, and the zoning tonight.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, are you going to close the public meeting?
Yes, I'd like to close public comment.
Close it for discussion amongst the commission members?
Do we have any discussion?
I, I just have to remind the commission that we, again, we only advise, and there is no, there's no noise ordinance. Just, for example, I live right in town and the noise and the burning of rubber for over two hours at a home was unbelievable, but there's nothing that we can do about it. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-two, what, five thousand, three thousand residents? So now we're sixty-six thousand and twenty forty, we're going to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand or whatever. So it's, it's just happening. Again, I always go back to if property was available and people wanted something special to be on there, we have to buy it because we can't ever promise that. We know that from real estate. So the reality is, is that I have been down to Toho Resort. I do Meals on Wheels. I'm down there every week for over three years now. It has always been the most pleasant experience down there. And I, I, I just feel like, again, a family business is so important in our community that I don't know that, one, we can be talking about the boat stuff as much as we should be talking about the actual zoning and land use, which we would do if we didn't know anything about a boat. We, we would. So those are my thoughts.
That's, that's correct. This is simply annexation and zoning. And the zoning doesn't change from what it already is.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify for, from staff? These three items will appear before the city council on what date will that be? Is I heard, I hear April tenth, is that correct? April tenth, okay. Just wanted to make the commission aware of that. And again, as, as Ms. Briggsby so capably stated, you know, this is an advisory commission. This is a recommendation that's being made to city council. And city council will address these issues on the tenth of April, which will be the second Thursday of next month.
So there's no more discussion. Does anyone have a motion on the ANX two four zero 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 one zero?
I would like to propose approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I'll second it.
It's the chairman, not the second.
Can, can second, is there? Second now triggers it to write for a vote.
Have a vote. Have a vote on the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You say all in favor.
Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Ms. Douglas?
I'm going nay.
So the ayes were?
Three.
Three.
Nays were two.
Ms. Bridgewith, Ms. Grisby, and Mr. Alexander. Pass is three to two. Recommendation for approval of annexation.
Does anyone have a motion on ordinance number two zero two five one nine? CPA two four zero 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 one three.
Wait, hold on, I do, but I can't find it. All right. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one nine, based on the sixteen findings within land development code.
I second the motion.
I have a first and a second. Have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Ms. Bridgewith was an aye vote, so the pass is three to two.
Does anyone have a motion on two zero two five dash two zero?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two zero, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
Is there a second? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Ms. Bridgewith was an aye, so that's three to two. Pass is three to two. All right. Matters will be heard on April the tenth before city council.
Next is ordinance number two zero two five dash two one and two zero two five dash two two and two zero two five dash two three with Puffin Road.
Good evening. My name is Zhao Kai Liu, Principal Planner with Community Development. This case before you tonight are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as Puffin Road Commercial. This requires, this request meets both statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous and reasonable compact. The existing county future land use is commercial with AC agricultural development and conservation county zoning destination. The request CT future land use is commercial. The request zoning destination is HB highway business. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse, adverse impact on CT facilities. Here is the graphic representation showing the current counties and cities' future land use. And here is a graphic representation showing the current counties and cities' zoning districts. Before January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, staff reviewed this project and recommended approval. Likewise, the request to planning commission is to also recommend approval of the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, and twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as Puffin Road Commercial. At this time, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Would the applicant like to come up and identify?
John Adams, RJ WA, Eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, three four seven four one. We're the agent for the application. We're in agreement with staff's recommendation for approval of the annexation, comp plan, and zoning map amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions staff may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Is there any public comment? Like to close public comment. Any discussion on this?
I'm curious, what are they putting there? What's the plan?
So the plan is, uh, commercial land use in the county and AC zoning. We're subject to the JPA, so we're annexing into the county or the city for commercial land use is what we're requesting in a highway business. Highway business allows several different uses, does not allow any residential uses. So their intent is to market it for commercial. They just can't market it.
They don't have their.
They don't have a use yet. This is step one of the process and once they have the zoning, they'll start, they're planning to start marketing right away for commercial uses on.
So there's no more discussion. I'd like to call for a motion on two zero two five two one.
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We got a motion for two zero two five two two.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five twenty-two, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Bridgewith, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone a little louder? It's, it's away from you and I'm having difficulty hearing.
Thank you. You can pull it.
I second.
Any opposed on that?
Any opposed?
Okay, so pass is five to two. Thank you.
And then, uh, we still have, we need a motion for two zero two five dash two three.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we're on, we'd like to call two zero two five dash two four and two zero two five dash two five and two zero two five dash two six. Ralph Miller Road.
Good evening. My name is Zhao Kai Liu, Principal Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as Anthem Ralph Miller Road. The request meets both statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County and is contiguous and reasonable compact. The existing county future land use is low-density residential with LDR, low-density residential county, county zoning destination. The requested CD future land use is public institutional. The requested zoning destination is OR, open space and recreation. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impact on CD facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the current counties and cities' future land use. Here is graphic representation of the current counties and the zoning, uh, cities' zoning districts. Uh, before January twenty, uh, thirty, twenty twenty-five, staff recommends approval. Likewise, the request to the planning commission is to also recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project known as Anthem Ralph Miller Road. At this time, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Can I, can I ask him a quick question? I'm sorry, can, can you, I'm sorry, you mentioned it was going to become public institutional?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, can you, I'm, I'm not quite sure what that is.
Yes, so in this case, because the applicant is trying to, uh, they are proposing to build a communication tower and the only place they can build is open space and then recreational, so OR and compatible comprehensive land use is the, uh, in this case is public and institutional.
Thank you.
No problem.
John Adams, RJ, excuse me, John Adams, RJ WA, Eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, three four seven four one. We're in agreement with staff for recommendation of approval of the annexation, comprehensive plan, and zoning. Few things I do want to point out on this property. As Kai pointed out, yes, our client has had the intent to move forward with the process for a communication tower at this site. It is currently LDR, land use and zoning within the county. This request to change to an institutional land use and open space recreational district is the zoning district that, within the city that allows your communication towers. Be happy to answer any more technical questions regarding their intended use. But tonight, you're not approving a communication tower. You're approving a recommend, recommendation for approval of land use and a zoning that would allow that to go through the next step in the process.
I have a question.
Yes.
Try it for staff unless you know it. What's the city's design standards for these towers?
City's design standards within their urban growth boundary is a maximum height of a hundred and fifty feet. This would be a hundred and fifty-foot monopole pine design. You also have architectural requirements. And that pine design is intended to blend into the environment. Yes, yeah, a hundred and fifty-foot tall Christmas tree. So that's, that's the intent of the code, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Well, I guess I could imagine that the residents, well, first of all, we don't usually go from somebody wanting to build something to somebody wanting open space, so that's just unusual. But I understand it and I'm imagining that Center Lake Ranch residents are going to be pretty happy if there's tower out there once they move in and develop all of that.
There, there is a hole in coverage. They did look at several different sites in the area and they did land on this one. It is two and a half acres that they would be rezoning this entire property, but it would be significantly smaller than the actual site. The, the, you know, towers all designed, you know, if, God forbid, something were to happen, you know, fall in on itself. That's how they're designed now. You know, and as far as the coverage, there, there is a demand for it now for existing residents, but then also the future residents of Center Lake residents to the east of this site and then all that commercial that's intended at Center Lake just to the south of the site.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Close the public comment. Do we have any discussion, further questions? Does anybody want to make a motion on ordinance number two zero two five two four?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five twenty-four, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone wish to make a motion on ordinance number two zero two five dash two five?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval on ordinance 2025-25 based on the 16 findings within the land development code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone wish to make a motion on 2025-26?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval on ordinance dash 2025-26 based on the 16 findings within the land development code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, planning commission meeting, April 15th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Good job, Vice Chairman. Good job.
You're supposed to call for the meeting.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Aye.
I have a motion to close it.
I move close.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.